Been unhappy if you couldn't hear the meeting?
Okay, we'll call the November meeting to order. Stanford, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Deeter?
Here.
Councilor Mills?
Here.
Supervisor Runyon?
Here.
Councilor Brown?
Here.
Councilor Belucia?
Here.
First thing we're gonna do is we have guests today, Andrew Alberti and Michelle. Are you husband and wife or not?
No.
Just working together?
Business partners.
Good. And they're from Flatley Reed. They've given us their brochure right here. And they're going to talk about the grant that was discussed much earlier. So if you'd like to speak.
Well, thank you guys so much for having us again. My name's Alberti and this is Michelle DiGarno. And we operate Flatley Reed, which is based out of Skylerville. But we do work both around the Adirondack, all the way down to Hudson, how past the central New York. So I was invited here today after you guys had a presentation for Mr. Rich Clark in Warrensburg. Just earlier this year, we had completed a CDBG housing rehabilitation grant for the community. And, you know, wanted to talk to you guys a little bit more about opportunities to support affordable housing within the municipality. So just to give you some background information, the grant that we applied for, on behalf of the town of Warrensburg, was what's called the Community Development Lot Grant, or CDBG, which is federal HUD dollars that's administered locally through New York State Homes and Community Renewal. We applied for a half million dollar grant, of which eighteen percent was going to be used for administration program deliveries. So the grant does in fact pay for its own administration and all the aspects thereof. And it's to assist low to moderate income individuals and families living within the town. And it basically addresses health and safety concerns, code enforcement issues. You know, it's really intended to address critical housing systems that provides for overall sustainability of housing within your community. It allows people who've been living here forever, maybe just don't have the funds to upgrade their old non-toothed wiring to, you know, one-ten volt. Maybe if they've got a leaky roof or a crack in their foundation and the overall structural integrity of the building is at risk. And all the way down to things such as, you know, elderly or disabled people that maybe need additional accessibility features in order to continue to live in their house and continue to be a part of your community. So we administer these types of grants throughout New York State. If we find that CDBG is one of the easier housing funding sources as opposed to affordable housing corporation or home grants to administer and to run. So typically, we would work with the community like yours. And depending on how much work you guys wanted to do or to assist in gathering the information in preparation of the grant, there would be a fee associated with grant writing. And then we would ask that you procure separately for the administration of program delivery as required by general municipal law. As part of the administration program delivery, again, probably about a hundred percent of that total cost of running that grant, including all parts of it. So a typical grant would include the selection of individuals that would be participating in the program. The provision of a construction, a person with construction expert work, what's called a rehabilitation specialist. That means that the homeowner reviews their housing and housing systems to address, develop the scope of work. An environmental professional that ensures compliance with all state and federal laws, including asbestos compliance, and let's say homes. And then working with contractors to assist with the rehabilitation. The municipality role in this is generally acting as the bank. So it is the individual homeowner who's contracted with the contractors. And the municipality helps administer the funds to help and for pay for it. That is, money are dispersed directly to the contractor through the state funds. And so the homeowner is, never has out-of-pocket costs or generally doesn't have out-of-pocket costs for rehab. However, what they're entering in is to a declining balance loan. So the way that this works is that there's either a five or a ten-year lien period. And it decreases by ten or twenty percent each year until that home is satisfied. And within the duration of that period, the person living in that home needs to, number one, maintain the home. Number two, they need to continue occupancy of that home. If they sell it or transfer property, there's certain requirements where recapture that happens, meaning they gotta pay back some of the money. And other things that they need to do, nothing that is overly burdensome. But certainly, there's an aspect, if they're going to get investment of state funds, that they continue to maintain it throughout that period. And then eventually, that need goes away. Basically, what they're trying to avoid is any person that would receive state or federal funds to assist in rehabilitating their home and then say, well, great, now my home is worth ten to twenty or thirty thousand dollars more, money that I didn't pay out. And I'm gonna sell it, I'm gonna make some money, I'm gonna buy a new home, and then they can go over again. So that's kind of what they're trying to avoid with this process. So again, there are other types of funds that are available for housing rehabilitation, USDA, Affordable Housing Corporation, New York State Home Funds being amongst them. We generally recommend CDBG because it is the only one in which they will generally pay the total cost of what's needed to administer the grants and create all aspects of that program delivery. And that's it.
We just wanna be very clear that it's a deferred payment loan. The person who continues to live in the home never ever has to make a payment unless they sell the home. This includes if they go into a nursing home, if they have to go into a care facility. If the house isn't sold, they don't have to pay the grant money back. It's a rule that's meant to discourage house flipping.
So it's not a loan in the true sense of a loan. It's a loan in the sense that they only have to pay if they sell.
Right, yeah. You know, these are nationwide regulations. Probably not a lot of house flipping done by the elderly population in rural state of New York. But they have to establish, you know, the benchmark somewhere.
Right.
It's also to help discourage like Airbnb's, you know, they wanna make sure that you're not using public funds to fix up your home to turn around and open an Airbnb in the summer. We wanna make sure the money's going to owner occupied, you know, homes to help people who are living here continue to be able to afford to live here and not have to move out of the community, so.
How do you establish the amount of the grant that you apply for and what are the limits?
The limit is five hundred thousand dollars for a single municipality per year. Generally, they want to see the funds of a previous grant substantially expended before you ask them for more money. So like, you wouldn't spend fifty percent of one grant and then go back the next year and ask for another one. But once you have spent, you know, eighty, ninety percent of a grant, you can certainly go back and request more funds, especially if you still have people on a waiting list. Generally, we, you can ask for any amount of money from two hundred thousand dollars up to five hundred thousand. So generally, we look at the number of people on the waiting list. You know, if you only have ten people on a waiting list, and they only minor things, maybe you don't want half a million dollars the first time out. Warrensburg had sixty-five people on their waiting list. So they have been building their waiting list for a very long time. They have been kind of assisted by the county by program. So there's, rebuilding together Saratoga County now serves Warren County as well. So despite their name, they serve Saratoga, Warren, and Washington counties. So every once in a while, they can do a project up here, but their money's spread very, very thin. So they have a long waiting list of people that need assistance, so they are applying for half a million.
Are there limits on each household?
There's not a lifetime cap with CDBG, but generally, they wanna see that you are going into the home and doing everything that you can so that it doesn't need multiple rounds of grant planning. So for example, if you had four or five extremely, extremely substantial homes, you know, that just needed a lot of work, the case could be made to invest a hundred thousand dollars in each of them.
Really?
But it really depends because HUD in general has a rule that they don't want to invest more money in a new home than the home is ultimately ever gonna be worth. You know, so if it was a home that was never gonna be worth more than two hundred thousand dollars, they wouldn't let you put two hundred thousand dollars into that home necessarily. That's why it's difficult to serve mobile homes. Because mobile homes are generally not able to be fixed up for less money than they could be worth.
So the person in that situation, they're just kind of out of luck because they can't get any money to fix their home and that's money can't be used to buy a home, I assume?
There have been situations where we've been able to prove extreme need, say, a family that would be homeless if their house wasn't fixed up. And in some cases, the cost of rehabbing a home exceeds the cost of putting in a new mobile or modular home. So there have been instances where we've been able to appeal to the state on a case-by-case basis to allow an old stick-built home to be demolished and a new mobile or modular home to be brought in.
Oh, that's good.
There is, there is a separate program. So while we are talking particularly about, right now, housing rehabilitation, which is a single-family, generally stick-built owner occupied. There are separate programs for mobile manufactured home replacement.
There was recently, and I can't disclose any, you know, details because of confidentiality, but there was a home that was assisted also in the Adirondack area where the housing was just so deplorable that this family was living in. And it was a disabled veteran and his children that was living in this home. The foundation had completely rotted out, you know, the house was truly unsafe to live in. The state allowed us to demolish that home and put in a new mobile home for them.
Is there a set contractor list that they have to use or do they choose their own contractors?
So the contractors have to meet certain qualifications in order to work for a HUD-funded program. And that's having a minimum million dollar insurance, liability insurance, and they have to carry workers' comp, even if they're a sole proprietor. They have to carry workers' comp and then they can exempt themselves.
So they get approved?
They get approved, right. So there's certain things they have to do to get approved to participate in a publicly funded program. But after that list is established, the homeowners basically get to choose any contractor they want off of that list as long as that contractor bid the work. So once a work scope is established and the homeowner agrees that this is what the grant money's gonna be spent on, this work scope generally goes to the municipal building inspector as well, just to get their opinion and make sure that everything is in line, you know, with the local code enforcement. And then it goes out for competitive bidding to that third contractor list. Maybe there's ten contractors on the list and only three choose to bid on this, on this project. Of those three, the grant amount is gonna be based on the lowest reasonable bid. You know, it has to be a reasonable bid and reasonable bid is identified as, you know, you're not lowballing, you're good with the idea that you're gonna change order later on. But if there's a difference between, if there's a cost difference between the lowest reasonable bid and the contractor that the homeowner prefers to work with, they just have to make up that difference. Sometimes that difference is two hundred dollars. You know, and so they do that by, in some cases, if it's a large amount of money, they establish an Esper account, you know, with the local bank. Sometimes if it's, you know, thousands of dollars. So anyway, there's a way for them to choose any contractor they want off of the list as long as those contractors submit it in.
He is the programmer responsible for facilitating the process and dispersing and managing the funds. However, it is truly a relationship between the homeowner and the contractor. You aren't the party to that agreement, you are the payee to that agreement. So they have a lot more power in that situation. And the role of the municipality, the role of the program is to ensure that all work is done competently. It's done, you know, by best professional standards and that it is complete according to the scope of work that's provided.
Who collects the bids and reviews the bids?
Generally, they do unless the town building inspector wants to also be involved. So we've had the communities we work with where there are formal bid openings with the town building inspector. And then there are programs where we collect the bids and fill out the forms to submit to the building inspector to say, hey, this is the lowest bid, do you want to look at their bid? And that's a choice that we need to value this to make.
So do we start by informing the public that we'd like to go ahead with this? How does it begin?
Generally, it would begin with citizen participation, so a public hearing. But I would counsel you to wait until the grant is announced for 2023, which should happen sometime between April and July. Generally, it's going, you know, in that window. Once the state puts out the 2023 Funding Year Notice of Funding Availability, that's when you pull the citizen participation because they have a shelf life. So things that you could do in the meantime is you could procure for grant writing services if you chose to work with us or if you think that you're gonna work with, you know, somebody. You can start procuring for professional services. And you could start building your contractor list, writing your program implementation plan, getting together the forms that you're gonna use for the program. And most importantly, doing marketing and outreach, you know, getting the word out to your community that this is a thing that you intend to do when the funds are available and would they like to start establishing a waitlist.
So we would create our own intake sheets, in other words, like?
We would provide, we could provide the tablets.
Okay.
So that you have basic information about what you would wanna collect. And then we can begin collecting pre-applications. And by generating that waitlist and creating that outreach and creating the list and you basically define the need within your community. And only then would we encourage you if you developed, you know, two or three times the number of people you wish to serve.
Yeah, I'd like to see at least twice the number of people you intend to serve on a waiting list because sometimes people drop off or it turns out they're not really qualified once you start looking at their, like, tax returns. So to establish your waitlist, we don't ask people for their financial information upfront. A lot of people are uncomfortable disclosing that until you actually have money in your hand and a program up and running. It's completely reasonable.
There are income qualifications.
There are income qualifications. They're actually quite high, you know. We have served restaurant owners, teachers, police officers, you know. There have been people in many communities who are, you know, this is a workforce housing program that's for hooking people who maybe are low income for the community, but not necessarily, you know, Section Eight eligible people.
Right.
Other things that could be done prior to, you know, the beginning of the application period is, so there's two elements that we're gonna be looking at as part of that application process. One part is establishing community need and defining the condition of housing within your community. This is typically done by what's called a windshield survey, which is exactly what it sounds like, you're looking at the windshield and you're making a reasonable best guess on the overall condition of that home based on its exterior appearance and maybe the electrical wires connected to the house. If it's, you know, it's old non-toothed, it's not gonna look at the same as if you have two-twenty. So that windshield survey, I've actually found to be quite difficult in the Adirondacks because the houses are such that from the road.
Yeah.
So, you know, that might be another thing that you might need a bit more citizen participation to assist with. But certainly having that housing condition survey and, geez, that was the other thing that might... The other thing that's part of that condition. Sorry, guys.
Establishing your waitlist is really the first step. And we can do a community needs assessment, we can help you hold public hearings. We can hold citizen participation sessions if that's, you know, what you need to do to build your waitlist. For example, in some communities, we might come for a senior luncheon or do a presentation at a library during the day and then hold something else at night for people who have jobs and, you know, can't get to something during the day. So we try to spread it out and identify local places where a lot of people are gonna congregate, like a Stewart's or, you know, a Legion Hall or something like that where there's gonna be a number of people who can start spreading the word. So usually, just the public hearing isn't very good marketing because people don't tend to come to them. Usually, you wanna do outreach through established organizations in the community.
Okay.
And we have the framework for all of this, you know, we've done this for twenty-five years. We think we're pretty good at it. And we really love working with rural municipalities, you know. We're not, we're not seeking the big city contracts, you know, like working in this region, primarily because it's pretty underserved, you know. And it's the city of Glens Falls, you know, town of Queensberry, they have a whole planning department. And smaller municipalities don't have those same resources. But you are equally deserving of the grant money. You may equally be in need of this grant money. And so many small towns miss out on the opportunity to have these public funds invested in your communities because you don't have a planning department like the larger towns and villages. And so, you know, we are here to help bridge that gap.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
So I think what we probably need are whatever materials you can provide us so we can make an assessment whether or not to enlist your services, which I think we all are interested in. So whatever the next step is for us to begin that process.
We can send you a formal proposal. And, you know, some, some communities have a threshold for professional services where you do or you not have to do formal procurement. It's often different for every town, village. So, you know, does your town have like a two thousand, three thousand dollar limit on hiring a professional service there? In general, writing these grants for the first time costs, you know, up to thirty-five hundred, you know, maybe sometimes five thousand dollars. That's a high estimate. That would be a community where nobody's going to help and there's been no groundwork, like whatsoever, by the community and we're literally doing everything. There are communities where we charge fifteen hundred dollars because they have active volunteers that are willing to go out and help gather some of the information and do the work.
The folks in Warrensburg and the Warrensburg MDC, you know, substantially lowered the overall cost up there as by actually going out and doing a lot of the community need surveys, doing, you know, some of the outreach and developing that waitlist. So, you know, their active involvement. Typically, the way that we write our contract is an hourly rate, not to exceed limits. So that, you know, if we're doing less work, we're gonna charge you less. We're not, we're not here to say, well, just here's how much it is unless the person wants it.
Should we put something out there to see how many people are interested first? Before we, to see if we're gonna get a turnout, you know, everywhere?
Yeah, we'd be happy to send you some basic information about New York State Homes and Community Renewal and the CDBG program and, you know, the types of materials that are used in other communities. So that you can put the word out and see if people are actually interested. And then, you know, you could hire us as a professional service and we could have our not-to-exceed amount be, you know, below whatever your threshold for procurement is. But we can't guarantee that that would be the amount of writing a whole grant and gathering all the information. But to kind of put that in perspective, I believe Warrensburg ended up paying less than half of our not-to-exceed amount because they had such an active volunteer group.
But certainly, a whole lot of sense to, number one, define the need within your community and identify and make sure that the people in your community are going to participate. And if there aren't gonna be people that are in your community that are gonna participate, then you don't get us toward a grant. So that's a great, certainly, you know, appropriate place to start. And just for some, some timing concepts, I will tell you that grants have been weird over the last couple of years, just like everything else. So like, what was it? There was no grant rounds in 2020, but then there were three grant rounds in 21. And then there was, it went back to just one in this, this past year. They're typically opening up and around the springtime, do around July last year, it's like July sixteenth or something like that. It's not part of the CFA process, but generally is around the same, same time of year. So you guys have quite a bit of time, if what's...
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll reach out and start to see if we can get a list of who's interested.
Our question.
Can I just ask a question? Is there somewhere that I could find something kind of a summary of this whole thing that I could include in a minute or not? Like if I looked online, if I went online and looked this up?
So if you were to go to the New York State Homes and Community Renewal website?
The New York State what's that?
Homes and Community Renewal.
Homes and Community Renewal?
And it's, I believe it's just HCR.gov.
And you could look up CDBGs.
The Community Lot Grant.
Community Lot Grant. And specifically for housing, there's multiple types, including infrastructure, all kinds of other things. And I could certainly email you stuff if I could.
Could we email for me?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I would like that.
I'll get your email from what's...
Okay, I'll write down your name.
Perfect.
Yeah, after we had our initial meeting with Warrensburg, we sent a summary email with a proposal about our services and who we are and what we do, not specific to anything that we're asking us to do yet, just kind of an introductory. Here are all of the things that Flatley Reed does and maybe you want, you know, a couple of them or all of them. And just a list of the different funding sources and an overview of how the different grants work.
Great. How long have you been in business?
So I started the company in two thousand, under a different name. And Flatley Reed has existed for eleven years.
Oh, okay.
If you're familiar with this, we're...
Thank you. Hey, go.
Thank you. We have some extra wrap cards there if you want to keep them, we can take them with us if, you know, you don't wanna cause clutter.
No, that's okay.
So, yeah, if anyone has any questions, please reach out to us. We all have our business cards and, you know, we have a website and we'd be happy to answer any of your questions or come back to another meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
So you guys do grants, grant writing?
Yes.
Any grants available that you guys know of that would work for a highway garage?
Yes, we're working on one right now.
Yeah, so honestly, mostly the funding for highway garages is gonna come from a, it's a legislative request called a SAM grant, state eighteen municipalities. So we were proposed two years ago that we completed a salt shed for town of Saratoga using a SAM grant. It's approximately eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's a company out of like Minnesota or something that did it for like four or fifty thousand dollars and we were able to add Grizzly to it also, so.
If you've got any information on that and any service you could provide in helping us with that, send it on.
Sure, I will say that the state eighteen municipalities grants are initiated through contact through your legislature, whether it be the senator or the assembly person. It's a little bit of a timely process. Usually takes like one to two years before funds are dispersed just because it takes so darn long. But certainly, that's, that's where I would start and I could put that in an email.
Perfect. We're in the initial stages of starting our planning, we're just getting the conceptual stuff going, so it'd be great.
Yeah, happy to even share the proposals that we received and stuff like that. See, you have an idea of what, I guess I was gonna say what it costs and what it looks like, but jeez, this was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so those things probably don't apply anymore.
No, they're quite expensive now, things have gone up, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I guess we're good, thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us.
Thank you for coming, talking to us.
It's become my pleasure, yes.
Did you wanna speak to me?
Thank you. Estim, again, for Richard's Library. Just wanna give you an update of what's going on. We have a program that's happening for Christmas. If you drop off some abandoned goods or spaghetti, whatever, you can get any fines that you might have canceled, one for one. And, or if you happen to be just wanting to donate, that goes to the food pantry of the Presbyterian Church.
Oh, okay.
I do have a question, though. This is not the library, this is me. So, all of the cemeteries in Thurman, is there a person who's in charge of those? Not mowing the lawn, but like dealing with the books or the lots or... Okay, here's what happened. My sister lives in Montana and she is this big huge museum person, so she, we're really, she's taken a real sharp right turn into genealogy.
Oh.
And we ended up, um, a couple months ago in Chatham, in the cemetery, looking for a relative of ours.
Mm-hmm.
Comes to find out, we only had minimal information, so we went to the library.
Mm-hmm.
Thinking they would have that, you know, wouldn't they have a book of the cemetery that's right, you know, two doors down from them?
Mm-hmm.
And they didn't. But the lady was very nice and she knew the guy, one person who had a book, which was the book that we needed with the maps in it to be able to find our ancestor that we were looking for.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought later, that's crazy. Those, where are those books? You know, I mean, if you go to the cemetery right here, I don't know if there's any spaces, but if you wanted to be buried in that cemetery, who do you get ahold of? Who's the person who's in charge of that?
Well, Sue Baker is the assessor clerk here and she has done work on that. I believe they have index cards for the cemeteries, um...
We had a person, years ago, Mark Kenyon did it.
Mm-hmm.
And then he, when he quit doing it, I think somehow Sue ended up kinda, ended up taking it over.
She kinda took it over, yeah.
Well, it just got, basically what happened is he walked into the clerk's office and just dropped it in the clerk's, we have all the stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Strange, really, the town only really seems to have anything to do with Richard. We just had a situation where somebody wanted to bury it at the Baptist Cemetery and it, it's like, nobody actually oversees all these other cemeteries. We kinda learned and people, it's going on.
So it sounds like we maybe need to advertise and find somebody and appoint somebody to teach her that.
I think Myra, the, she's the historian here and she's...
I didn't know if that would cover the actual cemetery.
They used to.
She has, she had cemetery records, I know.
She, they used to take care of.
She's a historian.
Because that's...
Yeah, she's working here.
She's working on get, gathering some information, I know.
Okay, maybe I'm gonna get ahold of her because that was one of the ideas that I had was in this town, there's a whole lot of cemeteries.
Right.
And if you need to find, and that happened to us twice while we were on this quest, because both of our ancestors we were looking for did not have a stone.
Uh-huh.
So you literally had to look at records.
Right.
And, or map, he had a book of maps.
Mm-hmm.
And find where you thought your person was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know, it seems to me, and I, it's probably a huge project, but it seems to me that that would be something that would be a really good project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we could find...
I think she'd be interested in that and I know she also recently learned how to clean the cemetery, cemetery stones.
I know that.
Oh, yeah. She'd probably love to hear from you then.
Okay, well, maybe I'll give her a call. I just didn't know if there was a person who was already in charge of that.
No.
Not officially.
No, she's like, the, the other historian used to do that, who's take, I can't think of the name.
That's what I felt bad for this guy in Chatham, this poor guy.
Poor dude.
He's the guy for that cemetery.
Yeah.
So the librarian calls him up and says, you know, we have some people here, could you come down and help them? He has his two grandchildren who he was watching that day, you know, I mean, it was like, it's got craziness. And I said, how did you get this job? And that's what happened.
Yeah.
Somebody, you know, died, left, you know, left or whatever, and he felt that and felt that that was something that needed to be done in his community, which it certainly is.
I know, I know she has maps, I've seen them, I know she's, Sue Baker has access to maps in there. And I also remember someone calling to get access to a private cemetery, 'cause some of our cemeteries are on personal property and you need the homeowner's permission, and we were able to track that down and find where that was. It was off of twenty-eight, wasn't really Thurman per se, but, and they did get to go see it.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, and thank you for that, I would...
No, you're welcome, yeah.
Continue to investigate, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, there's actually a lot of cemetery around Thurman, a lot of people don't even know about it. There's like, what, sixteen of them or something in town?
Yeah, we have a lot, some, they're private, like the Griffin one, right, that's private.
Yeah.
Gotta be one more place tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so. Just a few resolutions, um, I have a resolution to allow petty cash for the confidential secretary. Does anybody wanna bring that to the floor for me?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, second it, anybody?
I will.
Charlie, okay. Whereas there are times when the confidential secretary needs to make change for retired employees making health insurance payments or for small postage needs, be it resolved that the town board shall allow for the confidential secretary to have petty cash in the amount of fifty dollars. Petty cash allowance shall be reconciled on a monthly basis and replenished when the amount falls below ten dollars. So any discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next resolution has to do with the loader, um, it's to revise resolution eighty-five from our previous meeting. The dollar amount did go up a small amount and, um, also it, I'd forgotten that there was the forty-eight thousand dollar trade-in. So there's only three payments, one of which was made, and we have two more payments, so it will end in twenty twenty-four. Can anyone bring that to the floor?
I will.
Doug, Randy?
Okay. And a second, you, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this says four, you, Randy, three, right?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, whereas the previous resolution, which was resolution number eighty-five, to allow for an increase in payments was modified to reflect four payments of forty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, beginning in twenty twenty-two and ending in twenty twenty-five. And whereas the contract called for a trade-in allowance of forty-eight thousand, which was not taken into consideration when the modification was voted on. And whereas the loader had additional charges due to an increased interest rate and other nominal fees, be it resolved, the town board authorizes the supervisor to pay the increased amount for each payment in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four in the amount of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Attached, you will find a copy of the purchase agreement reflecting the trade-in allowance and the subsequent annual payments for a total of one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine twenty-five, and seventy-one cents. This dollar amount equals a principal payment of one hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars plus interest of nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 There's a class coming up, the Association of Towns is holding it. Um, it's gonna cover New York class, NYSERDA, Mark Schachner will be there, and they're gonna discuss broadband cellular and housing options and partnerships. I'm interested in going for the broadband cellular section of it, and New York class as well, but I'm pretty familiar with that. I wanted to know if any of you were interested in going. Um, it is on December fifth. There is a Sunday check-in for people who are traveling and wanna stay overnight, but if you do Monday only and you don't go for the breakfast and, and the buffet, then lunch, to go for the class and the lunch is thirty dollars apiece. I'd like to go and, um...
Where's it being held?
It's being held at the Courtyard Marriott right in Lake George. Pretty close.
Yeah. I'd attend it.
Okay, let me just bring it to the floor, who wants to bring it to the floor, you, Randy?
I'll bring it to the floor.
Okay. And who would second it, you, Doug?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Okay. So if you'd like to go, just let me know and we'll vote on that.
Yep.
Randy, you wanna go?
Put my name in.
Okay. And I wanna go. Doug, do you wanna go?
No, thanks.
Charlie, no, Ed?
I'm checking right here.
Okay. Cynthia, would you be interested in going, do you wanna go to the class?
Well, is it something I should go to?
No, you don't have to.
I mean, if it's something that, that I should go to, or is it something that I need before?
I can't go that day, I gotta work.
No, it looks more like it's oriented towards board members.
That's, that's my idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to go, but if it isn't, then...
Okay.
Yeah.
I can bring back information for you too, if you want.
Yeah.
I'm just interested really in, in the broadband section of it, to see what they have available for that. Okay, so so far, it's just Randy and me going, so that'd be two people, and it would be sixty dollars for us to go. Is there any other discussion about it or?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right?
Aye.
Okay, the next resolution is to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget. I put a copy in all of your packets. Um, we have the preliminary. I've looked through it to see if I can reduce any expenses or add to any revenue and I don't see any need for changes. Someone wanna bring this resolution to the floor?
I will.
Ed, and a second?
I will.
Doug? Okay, any discussion?
Um, I mentioned to Deb today that, um, as much as I'm an advocate for saving all of our fund balance to build a garage and I really wanna see us build a garage, I've been advocating for it since I ran for office. Um, I think this bigger budget increase at this time is, I think, a tough pill to swallow. With everybody facing inflation and rising costs of food and all the other things, I just think it's a, a, I think it's a bad time to have this large a tax increase. And, um, I'd like to see us take some of the fund balance and put it into the budget. I understand reasons why folks don't wanna do that and I appreciate that. Um, but as it stands now, my intention is I'll, I'll, I'm gonna vote against the budget. Um, but I'd like to see us take a hundred thousand dollars of fund balance and put it in the general fund and a hundred thousand into the, uh, highway fund. And that would reduce the tax increase by over half and get it down below six dollars. Um, as opposed to, what are we at now, seven dollars and change?
Eighty cents.
So, um, that's just my opinion, so that's how I feel about it.
We respect that, we respect that. But I told you last year that I would never ever vote for another budget where we take the funds out of them and transfer.
Yep.
It's been going on for too many years. And I personally, this is just my personal feelings, I think they do it just to say, hey, look, look at, I'm getting your taxes down, I want you to vote.
I understand.
And that's wrong.
Yep.
It's, it's falsifying our budget and our finances now. If we took that to the bank, what would a bank say?
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're using your own funds to draw your taxes down and it just doesn't look good and it's not right for a lot of things. I, I gotta vote no, I'm, we're not gonna.
I, and I respect that.
That's, that's my opinion, no.
I, I think that going forward, I think we need to do a couple of things. I think we need to improve our budgeting so that we don't have such substantial fund balances every year. Um, we aren't creating such substantial fund balances each, each year. And I think we need to, um, develop a written fund balance policy for how we administer those funds, whether it's placing certain amounts into a fund for the garage or put it into, you know, something for, uh, equipment or whatever. But I think we need to have a, I mean, the Comptroller's Office recommends that we have a written policy, so I think we need to do that.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I, I fully respect what you're doing. I, I don't disagree with the fact that we need the highway garage and that we should use the fund balance for that purpose. Uh, I just think this is a hard time to do that. It, to this extent, and I'm not suggesting we use all of our fund balance, I'm only suggesting we use a small portion of it, but, uh, that's my opinion.
You know, but over the years, we've had substantial amount of money in the earmark for highway.
Yep.
And our board and our supervisors, they just...
Yes.
Find a way to get around it, and they did. They, what was it, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and people don't know that. People need to know where, where it went, and that's wrong.
I agree.
This is, is totally wrong, what they've done to us all these years, so.
I agree. Yep.
I just, I don't think it's right.
I, I, I get what you're saying and...
We need, we need to bring Thurman into the, this, you know, but we, we gotta have a building, we got new equipment and we need it. And, and they're, they just wasted our money.
I agree.
They find a way, even if it's earmarked, they found a way to get that money out of there and spend it on the taxpayers, and that's wrong.
Also, I'm sorry.
You know, and, and I just think that if we keep dying the budget down, it doesn't make us any better. And, and, but I respect your thoughts, and I do, but I'm just, you know, I talk to a lot of people and I just believe we need to quit doing it. Last year was the last year, I, I told you, I will never do it again, and I'll probably never get a vote again, but that's fine, you know? But this is the proper thing to do, is to move forward and do our building.
And I, I respect that.
Okay. Just to give you an idea of where we're at, I looked at the highway, um, bank account, it's, we're down to forty-six thousand dollars right now in there. Um, CHIPS has not been applied for yet, it's due on November twenty-second, so they will probably have that money in by the end of the year, but that's allocated for CHIPS. They have forty-six thousand dollars and right now, we have a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to pay. And this is for now, we still have a month and a half to go before the end of the year. Salt's gone up.
Ten dollars a ton.
Diesel fuel's gone up. Their budget for repairs to the old equipment, the budget was a hundred thousand, they've spent over a hundred and fifty thousand as of the end of September. They also have these payments to think about for next year, the truck, the loader, and that's over a hundred thousand. The, what we have in New York class is three hundred for the, three hundred thousand for the garage, two hundred thousand for fund balance. We're gonna have to dip into it just to make it through the end of this year. And, and the main reason I don't wanna use fund balance is if we need to go for a loan, because of the violations at the highway garage, when I get the notice from Department of Labor and they say to me, you have so many days to fix the ventilation, the electrical, the heating, and all the other things they found wrong, I can't get a, I don't think getting a loan will work if we can't make our own expenses with our own revenue.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Ju- just to be clear, I mean, I, I, as I keep saying, I totally agree with the fact that we need the highway garage. No question about that, I mean, with all the issues that are going on over there that have been well documented.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what I'm suggesting is if we use some of the fund balance now, that doesn't mean we can't build a highway garage, it just means that at a later date, when we actually pull the trigger on it and we actually have to finance it, it just means that whatever we take out of fund balance and put into the budget now, will have to be included in the bond later. So if we, if we put two hundred thousand into the budget this year, that means that what we're bonding it, I don't know, it's gonna be two or three years down the road probably before we actually get to that point, we're just bonding two hundred thousand dollars more. So, and, you know, that's what, what will go on our payments.
But on the, but when you have that on your budget and they look at that, they're gonna say, two years ago, you needed a hundred and seventy-eight thousand to make your bills, last year, you needed three hundred and seven thousand to make your bills. This year, you need two hundred thousand to make your bills, how are you going to, that, we won't get financing.
Well, ju- just to be clear, so the numbers that I'm looking at, and just so I, I, I'm trying to get my head around this so I understand it because we have unassigned fund balance and then we have, um, appropriated fund balance. So the appropriated fund of balance, the hundred and five thousand, six hundred and sixteen, that's what's already...
That's what's in the budget.
That's what's in the budget for...
Uh, for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's current, currently.
Right.
And that, that's the fund balance that's already earmarked for expenses like the, the equipment that we bought. So that's, that's, we can't spend that on something else 'cause it's already earmarked.
It's already been spent, we're done.
It's already been spent.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Are you on general fund, yeah, you must be.
I'm looking at general fund.
Yeah.
But on the next page, we have an unassigned fund balance of four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
As of October, you still have two more months to go.
Right, so if we take out the remaining payments that we have to make for the rest of this year, what will be our fund balance at the end of the year in the general fund? The unassigned fund balance. So we have remaining liabilities of a hundred and, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. But the Senate, that includes the ARPA money, and that we can't use for fund balance.
Okay, so that shouldn't be considered unassigned fund balance, that should be probably classified as something else then.
Yeah, yeah, some of those things should be up, up in the other lines.
So e- even after we account for those things, we still have got probably close to three hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know, okay. I don't know, I'm, I'm nervous to spend that kind, I'm nervous to do that.
I, I understand that and, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not at all suggesting that we wipe out our fund balance, not at all. I, I don't wanna do that.
Highway doesn't have, other than what's in the new... Highway doesn't have, other than what's in the New York Class. So, if we need, right now, a hundred thousand, we need to take out of there, and we still have six weeks to go.
But the money that's in New York Class is technically part of our fund balance.
Right, but, but I'm gonna need to move it. I'm gonna need to move it right now to cover these bills, we only have forty-six thousand in, in the bank account.
But the highway fund right now is showing almost six hundred thousand dollars in unreserved fund balance, and we're showing liabilities, actually, we're in the negative on liabilities.
Yeah, I don't know why that is, that goes back to last year, the twenty-five thousand? Yeah, that's, something's not right with that, or the due-to-do from, I'm, I'm fixing that as well.
Okay. I, I've made my case for what I wanna do, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to create a fight with anybody or anything like that. I'm just stating my opinion on what I think we should do.
When you're looking at the five hundred and eighty-five, that includes the New York Class, so five hundred thousand is in there. So, that leaves you eighty-five, if you don't wanna use the New York Class money to do this.
But the, but the New York Class is technically unassigned fund balance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Earmarked though, earmarked for the highway garage.
Yeah, I mean, we've kinda verbally said that, but we still haven't actually created an actual legal reserve account, which is what we should be doing.
We can run a revolution up.
We should.
We could do it tonight, and we'll get it over with, it's...
Well, I think we need to get a better handle on what's reserved and what isn't, before we start moving money around.
I do too, I do too.
I think we'd be shooting in the dark right now, 'cause we don't know the exact number.
No.
Right. I'm just, you know, what, if we get a notice that gives us only so much time to do the repairs over there, and we can't get a loan to do it, but I can say, we're gonna build a highway garage, we have this money set aside, we have a percentage of, that we might need for a grant match, or we have enough collateral to get a loan. Showing that we can't cover our expenses on our own with our revenue does not look good for getting a loan. And when they look at past history, they're gonna see that we've used a lot of money to, to maintain and have no savings. Last year, we had forty-four dollars in savings, now we have seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, but we actually had a fund balance left over at the end of the year last year.
Yeah, to start the new year.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we didn't have money in savings, but we had a fund balance.
Yeah, to start your new year.
Yeah.
Which is why I had moved more tax revenue to the general fund, so we start with getting money right away.
And I agree with that.
We don't have to wait for sales tax to come in.
I agree with that.
That's a scary thing too. Yeah. I don't know. When I did the numbers to Randy after we spoke, I went in, I said, okay, well, highway, I don't feel comfortable to move any money out of there. They've had enough of their money used to keep the taxes down, two hundred thousand last year, almost a hundred thousand the year before. They're losing a lot, and they have a lot of repairs and a lot of expenses that are gonna increase. Their diesel fuel is going to increase. They're having trouble getting kerosene for the blended diesel to run the trucks in the winter. They're looking at a, at a lot of extra expense as well. So, I said, all right, well, what if we took a hundred thousand out of, for general, and we use that toward the fund bal, you know, toward the budget? Okay, without doing that, and the rate is two dollars and eighteen cents, someone with a hundred thousand dollar home would have an increase of two hundred and eighteen dollars. With the hundred thousand, their increase would be a hundred and sixty-four, they'd be saving fifty-four dollars. So, bump it up to someone with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. Without, without any changes to this budget, their taxes will go up three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's less than thirty-two dollars a month, but I understand some people will have to come up with that right away, they don't escrow it. With a thou- hundred thousand dollars, it'll be two forty-six, they're saving eighty-one dollars. So, where we would be losing a hundred thousand dollars, because it would be used for the budget instead, the people increase, it would save them eighty-one dollars. And if we were to get the garbage truck, and anyone who's paying for garbage pickup, paying forty dollars a month, they're, they're gonna save more than what their taxes are gonna go up. So, for those people, they're, they're gonna do better. I know that it's gonna be hard on certain people, I know that. But it's a correction, this is a, this is a correction, and actually, if it had happened all along, the taxes would've went up, and I have it somewhere here, like forty-two cents every year. It would've been forty-two cents, forty-three cents.
Yeah.
And because that didn't happen, now it's a bite, it's a big jump. And I am in favor of doing it the way it is. Plus, a lot of that hundred thousand that we'll be using for fund balance would be money that we'd be getting for state taxes. The state pays for the land that they own. So, I know that it's not gonna be easy for some people, but it is a correction, and it does put us in a much better place to get a loan or to get a grant. Do any of you have any discussion?
No.
No? Ed, you already spoke.
No, I, you know how I feel, Randy don't, I told him last year.
It's okay.
I, no, we went through this last year.
I don't know if you, you know, if you do have to deal with any residents who are greatly upset, ask them to call me, and I will talk to them. I have no trouble trying to explain it. Some people I have explained it to, and they've all understood why this is happening. I haven't had any, any negative feedback on it yet. And then I guess I'll call the vote. Doug? Oh, I'm sorry, it's not my job, you call the vote, you wanna roll call? Okay, Councilman Negan?
Yes.
Councilman Bills?
Yes.
Supervisor Runyon?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Volusia?
No.
Final resolution is to approve the payment of the claims. Someone bring that to the floor? Last page.
I don't, did we, did, who, who introduced and seconded that resolution for the...
The budget? Ed, Ed introduced and Doug seconded it.
Okay, okay. What are you missing?
No, I just don't have one for the claim, but that's okay.
It's not your last, the last page in your packet? Should be your last page in your packet.
Yeah, it's the last, very last page.
I remember you came up with when you compared that.
Yeah, sure. That's what you're using, a hundred thousand.
You don't need that bag?
No, I have it on my computer.
Do you need mine?
Okay, let's just write it down.
Okay.
Okay, so, who brought it to the floor? You? Who brought the resolution to approve payment of the claims to the floor? Hmm?
I will.
Okay, Doug made the motion.
Doug, okay.
I'll second it.
Resolution to approve payment of the claims. Total of abstract eleven general fund, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, is twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Total of abstract eleven highway fund, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eight cents. Total claims for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, is one hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last thing I have is I did wanna let you all know that I am meeting with soil, with hazard mitigation. We're starting the new, the new binder, I don't know if you've ever seen it, it's a, it's a big binder, and you go through the town and see what areas you might need FEMA funding for to, or just to identify any hazards that you may have in your town, culverts that might need replacing. And the one that I'll be concentrating a lot on is the Dipakil culvert. It's two pipes that are rusted, they, they flood every year. FEMA's had to pay us a few times on it, and I'm really hoping that by doing this, I can identify that, and they will see that it has cost FEMA money several times and possibly get us a grant to fix that. What the highway department would like to do, it's a bottomless culvert for the bridge there, you probably are more familiar with it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like an arch right there.
So, there's, there's a team, I'm trying to come, come, you know, create, Pat's on it. Jessica will be on it, because she deals with FEMA, and she has all these records. And I didn't know if any of you wanted to be involved in filling out the worksheets of what you think is a potential problem here.
We've installed two of them already, one in Sky High and one on the river.
Sky High and River, yeah, I'll put them on my list. Well, I might just approach you for information, 'cause I know you're on the highway, so you know
Yeah.
which ones flood frequently and what we can do to fix it. And then we just need...
Yeah.
Well, I can mention it, if you like.
Down through us, right down to the river.
Yeah.
Patterson Creek.
We could redo it at the organizational meeting, okay.
Last thing, that's what happened.
Yeah, okay. So, we could use it, we could use it now, if you want.
We took everything, they're right down to the river.
Yeah.
All the water, all the way back to Bear Pond, over and over.
People don't appreciate the force of water.
I do, it scared me twice, that wire we took.
When you see it coming down...
I see it, Dave, Pat, and I got stuck in that truck.
You get those old beaver dams, and they just sit there, and if they're not being maintained, they rot, and then when they let go...
That's it.
It's dangerous. Okay, so then our last motion will be motion adjourned, which is Doug's forte.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, did you wanna say anything? No, okay. All right, we're done. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll get down to the train.
Yes, oh yes, you can. Sure.
I just gotta leave, the media went over.
We'll get a hold of him, Charlie, when we get ready, huh?
Yeah, do that, that would be great.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Thanks.
I gotta get someone to fix the door too.
See you, Randy. Take care.
Please, you want one of these? Bye.
Bye, Ed, thank you.
Good job, guys.